We're openly meeting this evening with a little history of how we got to where we are tonight. When Act 46 passed through the legislature, it was a very divided vote. And it pretty much was divided by rural versus urban. In Act 46, for a place like St. Johnsbury, Rutland, Burlington, was not as difficult. But when you got into other districts that had different situations, unique situations, such as Vernon having school choice within our district, that's when it became more complicated. And those of us with those types of districts voted against the bill. We saw it, it's a one-size-fits-all bill, and we know that doesn't ever work. So throughout the entire process, the one thing I did keep asking the Ed Committee was, are we going to be able to maintain school choice? Those towns that have school choice in state or more. And they said, yes, Section 4 of the bill, of the Act, provides it to keep school choice. Well, as we've been finding out, the State Board of Education has been ruling different than that. And there was great concern among a lot of communities. We kept trying to do something to maintain our choice here in town. It's a valuable resource to us. And we were quite concerned that it may go away, which would impact property values for one thing. But the other is, our board has always maintained and truly believes that we should be doing what's in the best interest of the students. And if that means they're going to a different school and we're paying them to go to a different school, that's fine. We want them to go to the school that's most appropriate for them. For 80% of our students, historically, it's been Bradboro. But we have that 20% that go other places, and we feel we would like them to continue to do so. And that's really important to us as a town. Then what transpired as time went on, we found out that if we were to stay within this district, we would not be able to keep school choice. Then we said, well, maybe we should opt out. And then what we found out was, once we entered into this study committee, the study committee had autonomy, and what we wanted to do no longer mattered. That raised some red flags, and not just here, but that's throughout the state. It raised red flags throughout the state. It's like, well, we appointed a member from our school to go there, from our school board, to represent our school board. But now, it's an autonomous unit, and they can do what they wish, and they can drop the Articles of Agreement. As that kept evolving, and we kept trying to get a voice, or a more powerful voice, we decided to do things. One was to withdraw from the study committee, which created some issues throughout the state. People that have tried to withdraw from the study committee, it's all they can. Well, we maintained that we could, and we continued to do that. And for that, I must thank the Supervisory Administration, because they didn't press the issue. Since we decided to leave the study group, we've maintained a very cordial relationship with the Supervisory Union. And we've come to some, what we thought were good goals for the Supervisory Union and the school, or for the town of Vernon. In the Articles of Agreement, if you look at them, Vernon's moved out of those Articles. Also, one of the things that we talked about when we talked with the Supervisory Union is that, if we were to leave UHS Number 6, could we still contract with the Supervisory Union to provide the services it does? Again, we've been cooperating with our neighbors for 50 years, 60 years, and it's worked very well. So they said, sure, we do business as usual. We received, over the weekend, a letter from the attorneys from the Agency of Education, and they said, well, that may not be allowed. And what we're finding happened, and Mr. Staley and the board discussed a little bit today, is, and it's the first list on the agenda, the uncertainty of Act 46. It is a constantly evolving bill, Act. The interpretation by the Agency and the interpretation by the State Board of Ed, in many instances, have not followed what the legislative intent was. So more and more towns are getting very concerned about this. We thought it was prudent to pull out and to vote out of the district, the UHS Number 6 district, so that we would have all options available to us. Because the other issue with the law is, once you join a merged district, there are no off-ramps, you're in. This way, if we're not in, as I said, we can explore all our options, but you can get in at a later date. So if we were to go along and find out that, you know, maybe this isn't the best thing for us, it's not working all that well, we would like to go the other way. And that would be, you know, some of the tax implications, things like that. That's where you would say, well, it's not in the best interest of Vernon. We would have the town vote again to join. But it gives us the time and the opportunity to take our time, and be thoughtful, and research, and see what happens next year. On the 28th, there's a forum in Montpelier on school choice and Act 46. The last one we had was pretty well-intended. There are a lot of people in the state with great concerns about this. Here in our own district, one of the representatives, Putney, is very, very concerned. I've had conversations with him. The representative for Athens is very, very concerned about what's going on. So there will be great changes, I think, in this bill. And you're going to have the change in governor, lieutenant governor, Speaker of the House, Senate pro temp. Our whole governance structure is going to change in the state. So you never know exactly what's going to happen. But certainly, I think some of the agenda will change. If you look at Act 46, and what would happen under Act 46, the biggest thing is loss of local patrol. You really do lose local patrol. And this was something that when Act 60 came in, for those who remember Act 60, one of the things that we said was, that was the next thing, is that you would see the elimination of local school boards and this sort of thing. And it took a little longer than we had projected, but that's what happened. You would have a loss of actual local control within your building. We would lose school choice. The local school boards are eliminated. You have one board, like you have now from WSASU or the high school, you'd have that one board. And what is very concerning to a lot of folks, myself included, and throughout the state, is that if you merge, you lose the ownership of your building. It goes to the new entity. And your grounds and building go there. Vernon has spent millions of dollars building this building and maintaining this building. And we're very proud of it, and we should be. And then the other thing is, if you think about the things that go on in this building, it's not just school. When we had the tragedy of the young boy being killed by the train, we had the memorial here. We've had weddings here. We've had other funerals here. This is truly our town center. Vernon doesn't have a real town center, but this is it. And people that want to use the building are free to do so, and it is a community building. Our rec department is housed within our building, the rec department uses the building. Right now, there's no intention to change any of that, but you don't know when another board is controlling everything, what the new board's going to do two, three years down the road. The other thing that we've done over the years, and we have a couple of staff members here, well, retired staff members, over the years, we've always prided ourselves on the teachers and principals and people that we've gotten here as teachers, and we've had a good staff. Again, it's community effort. We know what we want, and we're going to hire a teacher, you have parents come in, and they're looking for certain things in teachers and certain qualities. And we do, we have a great staff here. Well, there's no guarantee that staff would stay here, they could be reassigned. So we're very concerned about what happens to the Vernon Elementary School itself. And that is how we got to where we are. We have a great deal of concerns, and when we initially started, we were on a fast track, and we said, we've got to slow this down. And that was one of the things that we did. We kind of went for the nuclear solution and said, alright, we're pulling out. And that did kind of blow things up, which was unfortunate, because it stopped the other towns from proceeding. And we were very clear with the other towns, we don't want to stop Putney, Bradboro, Dumerson, Guilford from moving forward, if that's what they want to do. If they think that's in the best interest of their town, go ahead, we do not want to be a roadblock. That's why we want to vote on August 9th to withdraw from UHS Number 6, they can proceed forward. Now, to withdraw requires that they all vote itself. Again, it's been a cooperative effort, and Dr. Staley has been very upfront with everyone about this, and he has said, you know, we can move forward doing that. And he would, he sees no reason why other towns would not let us out of the agreement. Beyond that, I mean, that's the short version of a very lengthy fight, mainly with the state. And it kind of fits our history, we've been fighting with the state for 40 years over various issues, so it's pretty much a Vernon tradition here in the state of Vermont, to fight the state. And we did ask to find out what would the financial impacts be to Vernon after we struck out on our own. And Frank Rucker, he's the finance manager for the Supervisory Union, has done some assumptions, and again, they're just assumptions, because we don't know what the final outcome of the bill's going to be. Some of the things we don't know are, if you recall, in Montpelier, I got the ramp off from DUI instead of going to 100%, we've got that gradual off tick. And we're not sure if we would, if we merge, if we lose that, because the other incentive is there, which is another issue that representatives are concerned about. People on the Ed Committee are disappointed that they actually did that, because it took the focus off kids and put it on tax dollars. And that incentive money, Brad James, the finance guy for the Agency of Ed, has said, it's not a tax break. Don't confuse it as a tax break, it is transitional cost coverage. Because what happens, if we had taken the initial step and done the accelerated version, we'd got a dime off of taxes. That's what it appears. The reality is, the dime comes out of the Ed Fund. So as the Ed Fund goes down, your amount received from the state, your yield from the state to your local district goes down. So what has to happen is, you still have to meet your budget. So it's a shift. You're going to save a dime there, but you're going to pay through your local taxes what you thought you were saving. So it is, it's all very complex, very confusing. And again, that's why we wanted to say, hold on, let's take our time, we've got until 2019, before something actually gets hammered down as final. That's when they can tell you, you're in this school district, that's where you're going to be. And there's potential for that. The State Board of Ed may say, Vernon, you can't be out on your own, you have to join another district. Well, we, I have had talks with other districts that have choice, and what is happening throughout the state is, districts with, schools with choice are now starting to group into new, forming new Supervisory Unions. So we may be in a different Supervisory Union with all schools that have school choice. That would be Dover, Jamaica May, they're voting on that tonight or tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, where they're going to have school choice. Marlborough, Jacksonville, Dover. So, you know, that may happen. The preferred thing for me would be that what Dr. Staley and what the board assumed to be correct, and what we thought the intent of the law was, we would maintain a relationship with the Supervisory Union. That would be the easiest thing to have happen. And again, we will move forward, if the town votes to leave the high school union, we'll move forward as we presently have planned, and try to be out on our own and link up with WSASU, unless somebody says to us, you absolutely can't do it. And then, I don't know if we'd challenge that in court, I don't know what would happen, but certainly, we want to move forward in the plan that we have. Now, if you have questions, I would ask, you hold until Mr. Rucker is going to give his analysis, again, the assumptions of what the impact would be. It's going to be the short version, because when you go through the long version, by the time you're done, you're really more confused, because it is such a complex system. So if you would do that, and then we would open up, if anybody could floor with questions?
Okay. We have, I think there's 20 copies here.
Give us a microphone if you would, please.
Sure. So if families could, you have one?
Yeah.
Families could take a copy, so that we can, we can have enough for everybody, just send it right around? So I'll give you a quick overview of why this is going around.
This is the microphone.
Here we go. So for those of you that look at your town reports, and you look at this tax analysis that the state of Vermont, the legislature, has required all public schools to publish, when the document comes around, you'll see, it's in that format, it's in an abbreviated format. So as that is going around, I'll give you a little general overview of the school funding formula in Vermont. It's prescribed, of course, as you might imagine, it's not optional. The format, it starts with approved budget at town meeting. Okay, this is the beginning of how tax rates are set, and I'm going to give you the short version of what it looks like if you decide to pull out of the UHS district. So the overview is, we start with the school budget. We look at non-tax revenues. And in Vernon, that's somewhat significant, because you have arrangements like preschool, where they pay a couple hundred thousand in a rent. So that lowers your total cost that's subject to taxes. You have a significant amount of special education grants from the state that helps carry some of the cost of operating. So again, that lowers the cost that's subject to tax. So we look at that as part of the budget process, you look at that at your town meeting, and you vote on that budget. There's a number that's computed, and it's called net education spending. It's simply your total budget that you proposed, minus those revenues. And that's net ed spending. So under any system, doesn't matter if you're unified, you're independent, you're Bradboro or you're Dumerson or you're Hardwick, that's the process that everybody goes through and sets the tax rate. So we can, we can see what it would look like if we did something different under a set of assumptions. So those, so here's the, here's the way we get to the tax rate. We take that net spending I just mentioned, and we divide it by the number of students in the district. This is where things change quite a bit, depending if you're part of a unified system or you're all by yourself. So in Vernon's case, we have, from the funding formulas perspective, three groups of kids. We have the kids that are here, we have the kids that are at Bradboro Union, and then we have the kids that are not here and not at Bradboro Union, but they're somewhere else, as Mike suggested, about 20% of our population. So that's, that's the, that's the thing that is quite different under the different scenarios that we're going to look at. But the last piece of the tax rate, it's pretty simple. I mentioned, you take your net spending, you divide it by your number of kids, any school in the state does this. And that's, that's a cost per student, they call it equalized spending per student, the state does. And then we compare that number to a base rate that the state sets every year, and that base rate's about $10,000. So to finish the background, if Vernon or any district in the state spent $10,000 a kid, you compare it to this base rate, which is about $10,000, and 10,000 divided by 10,000 is one, that would be the tax rate. That's how we get to the tax rate. And that's the comparable one. I won't get into the details about how the CLA does all of that, because it's not germane to this discussion. So in our case, now that everybody's got this document, I'm just going to give you the references of a unified system under that model, the Vernon system, as it is today, and then what it might become if you decided to exit. Okay? So here we have this document. On the left side of the document, that's, that's the proposed unified system, if it was in place for the fiscal year '16 period, the period we just ended, because we knew all the numbers there, so we said, well, what would it look like if it got reconfigured? So this is a single district. On the left side, we won't spend too much time on that, because that's not why we're here, but it is, it is the comparison. But it says 52 million, so you know, that's Dumerson, Guilford, Putney, Bradboro Temp, and Bradboro Union high school budgets, not Vernon. Okay, so that's the compilation of all budgets except Vernon. I mentioned about these other sources of revenues that are not raised by taxes, that's 14 million. We take, we take the difference, you get down to the 37 million, that's the base that we need to raise from the tax base. And that would be the tax base in the whole state of Vermont, not just the Vernon grand list. 2,300 kids as a unified system, that's everybody excluding Vernon, okay? And we got a cost per student of $16,371 for that unified system. I mentioned about 10,000, you see that number, $9,459, so I just rounded that off. And we have a tax rate, $1.71 for this unified system. Mike mentioned the incentive that the state has included in Act 46, they are saying they would take off 8 cents of the tax rate if we unified and went into effect, you know, voted in November and started operating in July of the new year. So that's, that's the comparison rate. The, coming over to the right side of this document, we've got the two scenarios for Vernon. The first column says the approved budget, that's what you did, not this March, because this March you voted on next year's budget, last March you voted on the budget that is on this document. You voted on a $4.3 million budget. I mentioned you, you have other sources of revenue, you know, that couple hundred thousand in the, in the rent for preschool, another $400,000 in state aid. Okay, so your net is 3.6 million that are raised from taxes, school property taxes. And when we do the math for Vernon, it's $16,122, cost per student. We compare that to that index I mentioned, same $9,459, everybody compares themselves to that. And do the math on that, $16,122 divided by that number is $1.70. That would be your, that would be your local district budget for all those kids that you cut a check for. So those would be the kids that are here, because you're paying your staff, and then those kids at Pioneer Valuing, because you're paying those tuition rates. But that didn't include UHS, because that's, you're a member of UHS as well. You go down to the bottom number there, it's not particularly different, the one that says $1.72, that's your tax rate, your equalized tax rate, if you went to your tax bill and you adjusted it for what Mike mentioned earlier, again, this off-ramp. So you know your rates are more like a $1.40, but what's right around the corner is, you're looking at being just like everybody else in the state, whether you unify or not, that ramp off goes away. So the comparison, as Mike had noted earlier, $1.72 as you are today, compared to this incentivized, $1.63. So, you know, that is, that is a little higher tax rate if you don't get the incentive, and if you don't merge with somebody, you don't get the incentive. However, looking at the other scenario now, that's as it is today. Now we look at the next column over, it says Vernon as a separate district, okay? You look at the numbers, and they say, oh boy, here it comes, here comes a lot of, a lot of pain, because we go from 4.3 million to 6.269 million. Looks like a big increase. But what that reflects is, if you're not a member of the union high school, then you're going to pay tuition just like Marlborough does, or Stratton does, or any town that's not a member of Bradboro Union. But because you've got a sense of how we derive tax rates, the reason why it's not substantially different is because you look at your kid count. And in the current year, you count 225 kids. You count 150 kids that are in this building, and then you count another 75 kids that are at Pioneer or wherever, but they're not at Bradboro Union. Okay, Bradboro Union counts those kids. So that's, what, what happens is, if you go and be your own district, then you will count those kids at Bradboro Union, you're paying for tuition, so that's 115 kids, you go from 225 to 340 kids. And now you're, you're dividing a bigger number, that's 6 million, you're dividing it by a bigger number of kids, and when you do that, you see that next line on the page there, $1.739. It's not substantially different. It is, it is a little higher, it's that, you know, 1.8 cents higher. If you turn that into what does that mean on a tax bill, on a $100,000 house, that's $18 annually. So there's the short version of the three scenarios, a unified system, what you look like today, and then what you might look like as a separate system.
Okay. Thank you very much. One of the, one of the things that you have to remember also is that we do presently pay an assessment to the high school for our students to go over there. So that assessment is coming to us. That's where Frank's talking about tuition. Instead of paying an assessment, because back a few years ago, Vernon would pay for all the students, we'd send a check to Bradboro. The law changed, and now the high school sends its own assessment to the town. So the taxpayers are already, if you look at that $6 million price tag, you're already paying that, because we pay an assessment. So that also helps with the shift, because it's money that's already being paid in tax rates. So it would not be total new money, that is just a shift in how it's paid. And that's really the long and the short of how we got where we are, but one of the reasons we want to do this is, we want to get all the questions we can from the folks here in town. So our next forum, which will be August 1st at 6 here, we can answer most of those questions. What we've been finding to be most unfortunate is, every time we think we have an answer to the question, they change the playing field. And it's been very, very problematic. I mean, Dr. Staley can attest to that, I mean, he's been working on assumptions with us that we thought to be the case, and... last weekend, some of that may have changed, and it could change again next week. But we really wanna hear what you have to say. We really wanna know, is choice worth $18 a year? Is local control worth $18 a year? Is your school board owning your own school, controlling what happens to your own property? Is that all worth the price? And it's gonna be up to the townspeople to decide that. I know I'm gonna vote on it, but we want this to be a town vote, because it's very important, it's not just the school and school kids. It's every taxpayer in the town is gonna be impacted by this action, whether we merge or not. And the other thing, we will ramp off the deduction from Vermont Yankee, but also the incentive money's gonna go away. So if you look at an analysis of what our budget would be over the next five years, the cost, what we would save overall is probably 2% of our budget incentives. It's not a lot of money. It is really not a lot of money. And at the end of, it goes 10, 8, 6, 4, 2, and then you're paying the full, full ride. And in my perspective, you've given up all control of your school, you've given up a lot of things for some short money. So, questions, please? Yes, sir. Ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry. Ma'am.
I have a question, because I'm not sure if I understand it. We were talking about not merging. Let me talk in trial.
No, that's fine.
We were talking about not merging with the rest of the districts. Why would the other towns vote not to let us go? Why would they want, why would they force us to stay? I don't understand. Because we don't want to be part of this, why do they have a vote to give us the okay to not be part of it?
In statute, when you, when you establish an agreement like a supervisor union or a high school union, as we did back in the 1950s, we joined the high school union here. And that's why we have what we have in school choice, because we said, we will join if we maintain school choice. So that's why we're in the town of school choice. But the statute is clear, we have to vote ourselves out as well as the other members, because you all join together. It's a partnership. So all the partners have to let you out. We don't anticipate there would be any incentive to make us stay, because the financial change is minuscule to everybody. Well, whether we're in the district or out of district, it's not a large amount of money to anyone.
One, one other question. And I'm not sure how to address this, but how many actual families and children did we lose from our community when Vermont Yankee closed? I mean, we're talking about the student population. How many people would we lose?
Actually, we, we were surprised, it was very true. We did an analysis. Does anyone on the board remember, it was like 12 kids? Something like that? Three?
Three kids.
Three kids? Oh, 12 throughout the, it was 12 throughout K to 12. It was 12 students. And, you know, the other thing we're looking at as a board is that, unlike most of you, I'm kinda old, so when I sell my house, I'm not gonna sell it to somebody my age. What we're anticipating is people that are gonna buy my three-bedroom home are gonna have kids. So we will anticipate that our uptick in population is gonna continue. And we are unusual, we have been moving up.
Hi, Mike. Are we in any sort of tuition stabilization plan? What's preventing Brattonburg when you can figure who's in their district from changing our tuition and cost per kid?
There, there are only certain things that a school can charge for. Actually, our assessment as a member district is higher if Dover's son's kids, Dover sends a child to Brattonburg. They pay tuition. It's a little bit less than what we pay in assessment, because we have ownership of the building. There are certain things in tuition you cannot charge for. So when we stop being assessed by the high school and our 80% go there, we'll actually pay a tuition instead of an assessment. So it'll be a little bit less, but I, I, you know, no one, no one's gonna have the ability to say, oh, yeah, you left the supervisor, you're here, tuition's now $10,000, that's more. That, that can't happen. Anyone else? Your son should be here, he always does the mic.
The vote that's in August, is that for all the towns that are going into this district? I just wanna understand what that vote actually is.
Okay, the vote we would be doing in August is to vote to not be in BUHS. Right. Because their vote is scheduled for September. November?
But all those towns still have to do their own vote, so potentially.
One of those towns could say no.
One of those might decide not, they could, I mean, who knows? They could for a vote, because they have one of those towns, but also will not join.
Trying to get you in order of hands.
Just had a couple of quick questions. If we were to join the district, the $200,000 that the rent pays to the school that offsets our taxes, would that go to all of the districts, or does that go just to Vernon?
For now, it would go to Vernon. In the Articles of Agreement, if we were to join, money raised here would stay here as well as our capital plan. But down the road, there's nothing preventing the new board from changing that. They could, they could propose that, and the towns could vote and say, okay, we, we think that we should all share that money. But in the Articles of Agreement, you could say, the rent money stays here, which is a substantial help to us here at the school, and it helps the town, so. But that could change. And as I said, it has been a very cooperative effort with the SU at this point to try and make this as soft a landing for Vernon as possible and get what we need. So right now, it's all real good intentions itself. But again, as I've said over and over, Act 46 changes and it's evolving. So what we agreed to now, two years down the road, may not be the case.
I had one other quick question. I just wondered how that impacts the teachers' union? Are the, are the teachers, would they still be allowed to be part of the union if we were to?
Actually, that's, that is what we assumed in that letter over the weekend, kind of altered that assumption, because if the state board says you can't be part of, you can't contract with the SU, all of that could change. So that's why I said this is all in flux. This is why, again, I said we wanna take our time, take all the time that we need, because again, once you're in, you can't get out. But if you're not in, you can't get in. And that, that's important to remember that. Anyone else?
Can you run rotation? Mike, you got the right name for the job.
Mike with Mike.
Mike with Mike. Going back to your Dover example, you're saying that we would be paying a tuition instead of a fee. Now, how's that affect Brattonburg's expenses for their building? Because we will no longer be part of that structure, you're saying. We do need to be paying tuition. So how does that affect the quality of their education? Because our kids could be at that school.
Right. Again, as, as I said earlier, and Frank mentioned, the amount of change, 150 students leaving the school would be, well, one, they wouldn't leave the school, so all of them wouldn't leave. But it would be an insignificant impact. That, that amount between assessment and tuition is a minuscule amount, and really, in the overall scheme of a $52 million budget, what would it be? Couple hundred thousand dollars, Frank? If, if we, if we paid tuition instead of assessment?
So that, there's a little more, it's a little more complicated.
Right.
So I don't, I don't, I know we don't wanna do too much of the research. So, so like Sally or your town office would clarify that the, the payment to, from the town, so you're correct about the payment from the town to the high school, it's, it's not referred to as an assessment, it's the same tax bill that comes from, you know, Montpelier that says, here's the BUHS tax rate, and Vernon, how, what's your grand list? And you raise the amount that you can, which is not all of what you've approved, and that's the exchange. So in that context, it's unrelated to the tuition issue. So.
Well, I, I guess the question was, would it be harmful to Brattonburg to have us out?
I think we've, I'm Ron Staley, Superintendent of Schools. What we've calculated is the historical trends of Vernon students going to BUHS, it's between 70 and 80%. It's been close to 80% for a long time. If you continue with 70 to 80% of the students tuitioning to BUHS, it will, it won't have much of an impact at all.
And there is really no reason to assume that we would change our, our decades-old pattern.
I guess I'm really confused. What is the question actually going to be on the ballot? And I have to follow up after that.
The question on the ballot, do you have it with you, Ron? Will be printed on the flyer for the next meeting.
This is two of those.
It would read, it's gonna look like this. It's in, two places, a check. First place, it's Article 1. If in favor withdrawing from Brattonburg Union High School District Number 6, make a cross in the square. The other one is opposed to withdrawing from Brattonburg Union High School, School, School District Number 6, make a cross in the square. It's pretty straightforward, pretty simple language. We want it to be as clear as possible. And this, this.
Okay. So the question is, do we want to stay or do we want to go from the Brattonburg Union High School District? So what happens? How does that 46 affect the elementary school, and why are we questioning that?
Vernon Elementary School right now is its own district within the Supervisor Union. We want to remain our own district. We want to maintain local control, we want a school board, we want to have the opportunity to select our teachers and administration, as we do now, and we want ownership of the building, and we want ownership of our grounds. We would like this community building to remain a community building. So it's, it's not, it's not really what happens just at Vernon Elementary, it's the whole town, because this is a town resource. The difference would be very little as far as how we do business, especially if we were allowed to contract with the Supervisor Union. You would almost notice no difference whatsoever. Kids would go to the school who are going now, kids would come to Vernon, as they do now. So it would not, you wouldn't see a lot of impact as to what happens here at the elementary school.
Can I say something, Mrs. Ewing?
Sure, Mrs. Ewing.
I, I just think there's a whole bunch of other things that maybe everyone should understand. Michael's trying to keep it very simple, which is probably a good thing, because it is very complex. But over the last several months, in being, and being part of just the audience of Act 46, I went as a school board member, and in one meeting, they said, okay, we're gonna let Vernon keep school choice for 10 years. And I was a little surprised there, because I had no idea where the 10 years came from to begin with. It just came out at the meeting, but it was never mentioned, to my knowledge, before that. Within less than five minutes, that 10 years went to four years, because members of that committee, one of the members from one of the other towns said, well, I talked to my board, and they didn't feel that Vernon should have that choice. So we don't wanna give them 10 years. We think we should only give them four years. And someone else said, yeah, I agree it's four years. And that's saying we're down from 10 years to, to four years. And that's what I saw happening in each of those committee members. Things were changed without any input from us. And it was actually extremely frustrating, because I tried to raise my hand and say, you know, I, I have some input here, and I was actually told, you have three minutes at the end of the meeting. Well, I don't know about you guys, but I forget about two hours before my question. I wanna ask my question then. And that wasn't allowed to happen. The process itself, I do not think was a very good process at all. Instead of the rest of the town saying, well, gee, Vernon has school choice, why don't we all have school choice? That would have been my, if I were on that committee, that's what I would have said. Why don't we all have school choice, and we'll keep Vernon can have it, and we can have it too? And instead, what they did was eliminate what we were going to have, what we have always had. And I saw that happen time and time again at the meetings. We would lose the school board here. We would lose control of this building. We would lose control of everything. They talked about our teachers condensing classes, and our teachers, in order to save money, which is what the whole point of Act 46 is, we moved. Okay, we're gonna move a couple kids from Vernon, we're gonna send them over. Guilford will come here, and some other kids will go there, and then we can combine classes, and we're gonna move a teacher. We're just gonna take that teacher and move him with that class. And as the more that I heard and I listened, it's like, that's not what Vernon is about. That's not what I want for our school, for our town, for our children. There's a lot of pros and a lot of cons to anything that you're looking at. What I saw was a very frustrating, I think my blood pressure must have been 200 over 160 when I left those meetings. Very, very frustrating. And they, in my opinion, did not listen, they did not want to listen, they were on the fast track to get this dime that they want reduced. And that's all gonna go away. I mean, a dime, it's eight cents, six cents, and where does that go with, Michael was able to get us a tax rate to 2018, well, do we lose all of that as a town of Vernon after having Vermont Yankee here all this time? They can't tell us that. You know, they're talking about having an advisory board at, at this school. So you'd have an advisory board that would go to the unified, unified board and maybe listen to what, what we had to say we wanted happening here. But that's not what I've seen so far. I mean, that unified board is made up of other school boards. And there is, I saw in one swoop, in one meeting, how they were gonna change that. I have no faith whatsoever that something wouldn't change. And of all the schools that have capital funds, ours is the second largest, which says a lot for this town in how we have done it. And now that money's gonna be gone somewhere else. And they're saying they can't use it, but gee, I just saw them swoop 10 years to four years. So what's, what's gonna keep them from changing that again? Everything that I've seen in this process does not make me feel good. It does not make me wanna go there at all. My vote will definitely be no as far as joining this. A year from now, we might have to come back to you and say, you know, okay, we've tried it, it's not working, it's not working for us, it's not working for them. Maybe we have to do it, but we have another year in which to research it, to look at it, and see how is it gonna affect our students and our, and our staff and our school. So right now, my personal feeling is, nope, I'm not doing it.
Okay, who gave her candy bar?
Thank you. So my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, in order to keep from having the entire merger happen, the first step is disentagling from BUHS, correct? That's why we're taking the vote on these?
Yes.
Okay. Wanted to make that clear, because it's, it's, gets a little lost in the weeds with everything else. The second part is, I did wanna speak to the demographics as far as student and everything else. I work in real estate, so I see what is happening right now in town. And with school choice, I've noticed a lot of families moving into the area, myself included. We recently moved in, I know there's a few others that have come in over the summer and are, there's more looking in this area now to be in Vernon because of the reputation of the school, the education, and all of the, all of the amenities that town offers that, you know, really make it a place that families wanna be. So I think as far as this demographics, you know, philosophy, why has been more of a turnover for the population as opposed to a complete vacuum of people getting, hasn't been that.
Welcome to town. How long you been here?
Two months.
Two months.
Almost a year.
And where'd you move from?
Chesterfield.
Well, welcome to Vermont. By the way, I'm, I'm your state rep also, so remember me in November.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. If we're not able...
If we're not able to contract with Brattleboro, my understanding is that presently some of the staff are district staff that work in this school. So would that mean that Vernon, we have to hire replacement staff for them? Those positions, also like the medical insurance that comes through the district and many other services like payroll, et cetera? What would happen with all that in expense to the town?
Well, if we're allowed to move forward with the plan that we've laid out, if the State Board allows it or if the legislature changes Act 46 to allow for that, nothing would change relative to that. If we're forced into a situation of joining another Supervisor Union to maintain school choice and all the benefits that we have here in town, then those would be details you have to work out with another Supervisor Union. But I think from Supervisor Union, Supervisor Union's services are pretty consistent and, and things are pretty much the same. But what we're hoping to do is, again, buy as much time as we can and go on the plan that we have outlined of maintaining our school choice and also dealing with our present Supervisor Union. Because it has been a good relationship over the years. And thank you for moving to town. Exactly the type of person I alluded to earlier. He's going to come buy some old guy's house. He's going to come with a couple of kids. You bought an old guy's house?
Norman Gundy.
Norman Gundy's house, there you go. So anyway, so that, that's what's going to happen. And I have talked to a couple of Realtors. And the last four houses that sold in Vernon, out of the five, the people who moved here specifically because we had school choice, that's why they came here. So it's also something to think about what it does to property values. Somebody over here? Have you eaten candy?
My only comment as a school board member and a town resident is I did move here for the school, the rec, and the school choice. So if school choice is important to you and a priority, then you need to vote accordingly.
I became very concerned when I heard about the implications of Act 46. I think the biggest concern was the way it didn't seem to be, or at least the study committee that was trying to implement Act 46. Things just changed so often. Deb alluded to that, but there doesn't seem to be any real clear direction. And there seem to be ways that this could be, their goals could be accomplished without such destructive measures that are hurting so many districts. This is not unique to Vernon. There, there are towns all over the state that are really struggling with this. And towns in our district that may very well vote no that they don't want to be a part of this. It's, it's sad because they could have accomplished what the good parts that they wanted to accomplish without so many potential really negative impacts on the town, like losing control over your, over your building. And like losing your board and only having one member on a nine-member board in the district that's going to decide budgets, everything. There, there just are many implications that, that made me very concerned. So it seems sad that we had to take kind of a drastic measure to vote to get off this committee, which raised an uproar and, and has, has been a source of consternation for many people that are trying to push that along. But it seemed like the only responsible thing to do for Vernon.
Did you just, are you new in town?
Say what?
You're new in town?
Yeah, right. Yeah. I'm one of the weirder ones. I married into this town. I married a local girl. I've moved nine times in town. I've bought five houses in town. She won't let me out. And one of the best things is the town of Vernon. Because this is what makes Vernon Vernon. We've got a school board or we have a select board or we have a different board that when things don't smell right within Mount Pelear, that affects Vernon. We come together. We talk about it. We get the information so we can make an intelligent decision, whether it's at the ballot box or town meeting. But that's what makes Vernon Vernon. And even though I chose to put my kids in a private school, and a lot of you remember me from town meetings every year voting, how come I can't get town money for my kids to go to a different school? Because it was a Christian school. Our choice. You all that are here, you've got kids who pioneered. Some kids go to the tech school. Or I don't know if they still do, but I know a nephew of mine did. We have choice. And I for one will fight as, as best I can to keep it that way. Because we have, as far as I'm concerned, one of the best schools in the state. We've got some of the best teachers. We've got a school board who fights for us. And like you said, Deb, you went to that meeting and they basically shut you down and said, you've got three minutes at the end. I'm like you. You know, I've got a question I want to ask you because of the fact that I can't remember five minutes from now what I'm going to think about it. But it's important that we're all here tonight for one reason, to learn. And that's the only way we're going to get answers is to ask questions and to hear from our school board.
How you doing? I know you're not going down. Have you moved to tend it for houses?
No. I'm going to go out on a limb. I don't care about school choice. I like Brattleboro. My kids went there, so school choice, it doesn't matter to me. But taxes, it's funny to me again about the amount of taxes because I hear from the editorial pages, and I don't know what her name is. She's a rep from another town, saying, oh, Vernon doesn't like the 10 cents. You're not going to get that credit. So what is it going to cost us if we leave? And are we really losing the 10 cents?
Okay, and as Frank said earlier, the impact is about two cents if we leave. Yeah, there is some incentive money. But again, what you have to consider is that that incentive money comes from the Ed Fund. And if you remember several years ago when we had put $27 million in the Ed Fund, we still had to meet our budget. Where'd that money come from? You have to raise it on a local share. So if your yield goes down, you still have to raise money for your budget. So that's where many of us throughout the state look at the incentive money 10, 8, 6, 4, 2 as kind of an illusion because you really don't get that. And, and it was never meant to be an incentive to merge. It was meant to support transitional costs. So the, Brad James, the head of the finances for the agency, has said that. Members of the House Education Committee have said they feel bad that they put those incentives in because it confused the issue. Because people are assuming they're going to get these big tax breaks. And it took a lot of the focus off where we should be focusing on, that's kids. So that was one of the things Act 46, if you remember, it had thresholds. You couldn't go over a certain percentage for the next two years. But one of the things they did is they eliminated one of the year's thresholds. So, you know, all, all of that change, you're never sure of what is going to be there. So it's very difficult to answer your question. And I think the best chance we have at this point is what Frank said. The impact to us would be about two cents. Or $18 on a $100,000 home per year. That's, that's the change. I, I, to me, to keep control of a school building, to keep school choice, to keep our staff the way we want it, it's worth 18 bucks there is. Anyone else? Gina's got a point. Grab your mic. I'm Deb Swin. Grab that.
Just another comment that if the vote to withdraw does not pass in August, then we will be part of this unified district. The unknown.
So the moral of that story is, hopefully you will help us, help other people in town to become informed so they know what's happening. Because this has kind of crept up on us. I think a lot of people in town really aren't aware of the huge impact this could have. So talk to your friends and neighbors and help them to understand. This is really important.
I'd just like to say that I think this is a very scary thing. They're already talking about taking away our building. And they're talking about taking away our choice. Down the road, if we join, we will have nothing to say with one out of nine on that school board, what they're going to take away from us next. In other words, they can do anything they please and we will have nothing to say about it. And I think that if you really care about your school, you're going to want to keep control from people who would do that.
I was just confused about the ballot. I thought I'd be voting no, but I'd be voting yes. And I don't know if anyone else is as confused as you are.
We will attempt to make this clear as possible so that people understand what each question is asking and the implication of what that means. Again, as I said, we're going to have a meeting again August 1st. We're going to try and bring more details, whatever each doesn't mean yet. That's the most current information. But again, it changes on a daily basis, so it's harder to be current with the information. But certainly, we will try to make this clear as possible. Also, just a little plug, the 28th of this month, 10 o'clock, Mount Peear, 11 in the State House. There's a forum on Act 46 and school choice. Anybody who wants to come, come. Last time we had it, there were people following the state. We're going to do it again. Because as, as we go further down this Act 46 road, there are more and more towns getting very concerned about this going down. So it's becoming a bigger question.
Anthony Sprouse. So if we vote to withdraw, not join this system, and we, and we decide later on that we do want to join, I'm assuming the other towns would have to vote to allow us to join? Is that correct?
I believe that is the case.
One other thing maybe for the next meeting. I'd like to hear some advantages to joining. I'm not hearing, I mean, I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is pretty one-sided. And I wonder if there are advantages to joining the system. If somebody could, could speak to that, if not now, at the next meeting. Because I'm, I'm hearing a lot of negative stuff. But I'm sure there, there are some advantages, but I'd like to hear them sometime.
I think you'll hear in the next meeting is the board that talked about doing exactly that. And Walter Brown's not here tonight, but he'll be at the next meeting. And he is probably a list of pros and cons. Deb will speak to the issue. And Ron, you're waiting, you want to speak to him tonight?
Yeah. Why not give a little advanced preview?
So I would just encourage you to look at this document. I'm not going to spend a lot of time tonight. But if you look at the rationale within the first two pages under the executive summary, that's a good document to give you a rationale as to why the merger makes sense. And I'm not doing this to speak against Vernon's, what you're advocating tonight, but answering your question of, so why would the other districts do this? So on page four, there's some cost implication material. Take a look at that. Page, top of page six. These articles are designed to make sure that we do identify funds that are restricted to particular towns, like scholarship funds, endowment funds, capital funds, Mike mentioned. The rec department money, that would be specific to your town. Those are that, those special funds. I think it's important on page nine, Article 15, local advocacy through school-based leadership councils. I think it's important to actually know what those school-based councils are doing to advocate for your particular school. The one thing I have to say is BUHS VI is a unified school district with representatives from Brattleboro, five from Brattleboro, one from each surrounding town, Vernon, Guilford, Dumstun, and Putney. And quite frankly, that's a very well-functioning board. They don't make decisions like, okay, this is good for Brattleboro and it's bad for Vernon, so let's do it. They do it for the benefit of our students. And that's what I would see as a unified district board doing. And the local advisory councils are there to advocate for your particular school. There's a list of things that will be in articles that can't be changed. It's not like the new board can say, we're going to do away with these things. It's in the articles. You'd have to have a vote of the whole district, each town. You know, just like if you were withdrawing from the town, you'd have to have each district sign in. And if you were joining, you'd do the same thing. There'd be no reason why the unified district wouldn't welcome Vernon. I know that. And then the other thing that Frank pointed out too in this document, the status quo is about two cents. But if you look at the incentives, the unified district, the 163 versus the 173, it's about a 10 cent difference. Now, that's going to change over time. It gets reduced to eight, from eight cents to six cents to four cents to two cents. But it's about a 5% gain, a reduction in taxes. So there is a financial element to this. And then again, if, as, as you read other materials, you get a sense of how do we, when we consolidated special ed, which was mandated by the, by the district, by the state, excuse me, you know, we, we shared staff. And we do that now. And we went from one teacher for every seven and a half students to one teacher to every 12 students as a caseload. We didn't think that was, you know, pushing the caseload up to 15 or 18, which is kind of the standard. We wanted to keep it small, 12 students for every teacher, special ed teacher. A result of that was a standard is about $300,000. We hadn't planned for that. We weren't, that wasn't our goal to do that, but it was a result. So it was a good result. And quite frankly, with the shared staff, we have better services here in Vernon and in the other districts than we did when we had it by individual town districts. We have much more flexibility in terms of the staff. So those are just some examples. I encourage you to read the document, come back with questions on the first, tickets first.
Mr. Staley, why are you still up?
Yep.
Are you saying that we're going to fill that halftime position that's gone vacant in, in Vernon for the past year for special ed? Is the district going to fill that this coming year?
Whatever was in the budget, this current budget, would be in there.
Right, it was in last year's too, but we didn't get it, or him, or whoever.
I don't know. If it's budgeted, you would get it. So maybe it's not budgeted. I don't know, I'll have to talk to him.
Cheryl, what do you know about that? It was budgeted. It was budgeted.
It, it must not be budgeted if nobody was hired. And again, based on the caseload.
I'd just like to say that this, this was another thing that, that I was trying to figure out when I first started learning about this, about why, why would anyone want to do this? Because you're giving up so much. And one of the things that, that I heard was a reason to do it was to share resources, like special education resources and more, more equity. And having worked in the district for several years, I was always very impressed with the way we did share resources already. And I think Ron should really be very proud of the district. I think the Wyndham Southeast Supervisor Union has, has actually done many of the things that this legislative, legislative committee or whoever came up with this was trying to accomplish. We have really have done many of those things already in this district. So it's, it's, that's why I was saying, it just seems so unfortunate that, that...
So it's, it's, that's why I was saying, it just seems so unfortunate that, that the goals are good, we've tried to do them, we have done many of them, we've accomplished a lot as a district, there's sharing of teachers, sharing of all kinds of special education resources that have gone on. Anyway, but what we are going to give up as a town, I, I think that probably when they made this law, there are some districts in the state that, that haven't been doing as well as they might have been. But I think we should all be feeling pretty proud of the district that we've been a part of. And it's just sad that it's, it's come to this where we have to, we have to take kind of a drastic measure to maintain our, our own control of our town. And I have a feeling there are other towns that are going to be doing the same thing, because they're very concerned.
That, that is true. I mean, people throughout the state are very concerned about this Act 46. As I started the evening, it's a one-size-fits-all. And I'm sorry, but, and my shirt is not gonna fit Deb, and her blouse is not gonna fit me. One size, not fit all. Just doesn't work. There could've been more thought given to this process. There are many of us within the supervisor union that ask the question, why can't we just stay the way we are? We're accomplishing almost all the goals. And again, it's the agency and the State Board of Ed driving an agenda. That's what this is. It's, it's a state-driven agenda to change governance in the state of Vermont on how we handle our schools. I don't know, I, I always thought the town meeting was nice. I always thought that the local control was nice. I don't know if I wanna live in New Jersey. You know, I mean, you end up with people running your town and your school that you don't know. You're, you're... Page seven, how are members elected? It's an at-large system. What does that mean? That means that Dumerson is gonna vote for the Vernon rec. Why? Why would you have that? Why would you mock that? You know, and, and, you know, when, when things like that occur, it's problematic. If you look at the first page this evening, the heading, we withdrew a couple of months ago from the meeting, from the study committee. We're still listed as being in the study committee. We don't wanna be in the study committee. We've said that time and time again. We're listed in the study committee. We, we don't sit in there. I mean, we, we've sent someone to the meetings to observe, but we really haven't been participating since we withdrew. You know, and it, it's, it's very difficult, and it's difficult for everyone. Because while on one hand, the district is trying to do all they can to help us, they're also trying to move forward, and in moving forward, it's not helping us. So, you know, we're all in a very difficult situation. But again, the thing to remember is, on a night if you vote to leave the high school union, we have options. If you vote to stay in the union, your options are gone, and there are no offerings to Act 46. That's one of the big concerns throughout the state. Where are the offerings? What if this is not working for my town? What if we don't like what's going on? Once you're in, you're in. There's no way out. If you delay getting in, you, you maintain options until you decide what to do. And I think that's what we're asking. I mean, we see value in all of this, and we see the special qualities of Vernon, and we'd like to maintain that. But at some point in time, it may be that we can't afford to maintain that. And then we'd be looking at other options. Currently, that's not the situation. So, you know, one of the other options could be join up with a supervisor union that has all-choice towns and maintain choice. But if we, if we vote to stay in the BUHS number six, that's no longer an option. Again, I would ask you all to come on the first, participate in the meeting. We'll try and have answers to some of the questions that were asked this evening. The flyer, when you get it, will have the ballot question also on it, so you'll, you'll see what it actually is. And please encourage your friends and neighbors to come and attend the meeting. Because as it said on the flyer, we want people to be informed voters. And if you come, and we give you some pros and cons. And if the town votes to go in with the merger, that's what the town picked. And I would be usually disappointed. I haven't supported this bill since the day it was proposed. I don't think it's good for small towns. And I, and I think, as I hope most of you feel, the best control for your town is as close to town as possible. The further you move governance away from your town, the less you can influence it. So if there's no more questions, I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight. Are you going back and mowing your lawn tonight, or are you done? Heard that all day. Okay, we'll see you all on the first. And Linda Serapinski made an inquiry about that August 28th meeting, if the town, if people would be interested in riding up on a bus or something, if the town could run a bus up to the State House or something? July 28th, I'm sorry, July 28th. I don't, I don't know how you check into that, but Linda, if, if there's interest, could you follow up on it?
Yeah, I'll follow up.
Thank you.